Buenas tardes y buenas mañanas. Bienvenidos al edificio del Congreso de Guam. La audiencia pública de esta tarde se lleva a cabo por el Comité de Financiación y Operaciones del Gobierno y se llama a orden en 2:03, y es el 25 de junio de 2025. El primer comunicado público fue diseminado a todos los senadores y medios de comunicación el 18 de junio de 2025, con el segundo comunicado diseminado el 23 de junio de 2025. Los comunicados de audiencia fueron también disponibles en el sitio web del Legislativo de Guam, nuestro calendario legislativo y el comunicado público del gobierno de Guam. Esta tarde el comité escuchará un testimonio sobre el proyecto número 146-38 COR introducido por el vicepresidente V. Anthony Ada, es un acto para agregar un nuevo 5.117.3, capítulo 5, título 5, del Guam Code Annotated, relativo a la aprobación del director ejecutivo del Consejo de Gobernación del Mayor de Guam, autoridad de adquisición de bienes y servicios que no excedan el valor de 500,000 dólares. El comité también escuchará el siguiente proyecto este tarde: proyecto número 134-38 COR introducido por el senador William A. Parkinson, un acto para modificar el 5.213 de capítulo 5, título 5, del Guam Code Annotated, relativo a la aumento del límite de compra pequeña. Antes de empezar, me gustaría recordar a todos los senadores y concejales de la legislatura de Guam las reglas generales de conducta: individuos testigos deben ser reconocidos primero por el personal de la corte antes de hablar y deben claramente decir su nombre completo para fines de registro. Las preguntas y testimonios deben estar confinados a la sustancia y naturaleza del proyecto en la agenda. Los inferences personales a la característica o motivo de cualquier senador o individuo testigo no son permitidos. El personal de la comisión puede ordenar la desaparición de cualquier miembro de la legislatura de Guam o de la audiencia pública que fracasa el decorum adecuado, de acuerdo con las reglas de Guam 38, cualquier violación de esta regla general de conducta resultará en la desaparición inmediata de este auditorio público. En este momento me gustaría bienvenida a mis colegas que me han acompañado esta tarde. En primer lugar, el vicepresidente Tony Ada, quien también es el vicepresidente de este comité. Bienvenido, señor. Senador Sean Gumutautau, senador Telo Taidigui y senador Therese Terlahi. Gracias por acompañarnos hoy, colegas. Así que en este momento comenzaremos con el primer proyecto en la agenda, y ese es el proyecto número 146-38, como mencioné anteriormente, introducido por el vicepresidente Ada. Vicepresidente Ada, ahora eres reconocido para abrir y discutir tu proyecto. Claro, como el vicepresidente está... Bueno, justo antes de que surja, entonces vamos a hacer esto también. ¿Podemos llamar adelante y testificar en este proyecto? proporcionando testimonio oral, Joy Jean Arceo. Y también vamos a mencionar a Grambotha de GSA. Por supuesto, sabemos que Joy Jean Arceo es el director ejecutivo del Consejo de Gobernación del Mayor de Guam. También tenemos al mayor Anthony Chargalov, que también querría testificar en este proyecto, y al mayor Richard Arroyo. Por favor, vayan adelante. Es un poco de reunión desde esta mañana. Y, señores, eres muy afortunado de que hayas salido entre los árboles. Así que voy a empezar con ella después de que nuestro buen vicepresidente abra su proyecto. Sí, es más.
Buenas tardes a todos. Gracias, señor presidente. El proyecto 146-38 COR ha sido aprobado y otorga autoridad de adquisición al Consejo de Gobernación del Mayor de Guam. La intención de este proyecto es otorgar esa autoridad de adquisición. Tengo toda la confianza en el personal administrativo para obtener toda la formación necesaria y certificaciones para llevar a cabo las provisiones de este proyecto. Y si no lo han hecho, estoy seguro de que probablemente ya tienen ya que... esos entrenamientos están listos y tal vez tienenlos bajo su gorro ya. Hay 19 oficinas mayoral y múltiples senadores y senadores de comunidades y centros de recreación bajo la jurisdicción de estas oficinas mayorales, sin embargo, las compras simples parecen ser tediosas y complicadas. Sabes, GSA tiene un trabajo muy difícil administrando la adquisición de bienes y servicios para cada agencia del gobierno de Guam que no delega o otorga o otorga autoridad de adquisición. Y creo que en la aprobación del Consejo de Gobernación del Mayor de Guam, la autoridad de adquisición junto con la necesidad de que complique todas las leyes, reglas y regulaciones, mandatos de formación, tal vez tenga una mayor eficiencia y gastos de gasto se lograrán también. Y eso probablemente tomaría mucho de los compras numerosos que tal vez pasan por el GSA solo con el Consejo de Gobernación de Guam. Y con suerte esto puede ayudar no solo al Consejo de Gobernación de Guam y GSA, pero especialmente a aquellos que están recibiendo los servicios y bienes en las diferentes municipalidades a través de nuestra isla. Y con eso, señor presidente, me gustaría escuchar los testimonios que se darán por parte del panel. Gracias.
Sí, es más, vicepresidente. Y afortunadamente, señores, tienes otra rosa que ha unido a tu grupo, y esa es Ariana Kiriguat. Y ella también está con GSA. Así que creo que voy a empezar con el director ejecutivo, la Joy Jean Arceo del Consejo de Gobernación del Mayor de Guam. Y por favor, provee su testimonio en este momento.
Gracias. Buenas tardes, presidente Duñez, vicepresidente Tony Ada, miembros del comité y los senadores honorables del 38° Legislativo de Guam. Gracias por la oportunidad de aparecer ante ustedes hoy con el fuerte apoyo del proyecto 146-38. Mi nombre es Joy Jean Arceo y me honra servir como director ejecutivo del Consejo de Gobernación del Mayor de Guam. Soy certificada bajo la ley de adquisición de Guam de acuerdo con el proyecto 5 GCA 5141 y traigo a la obra un fuerte fondo en la compliance y eficiencia operacional de adquisición. Desde mi nombramiento he trabajado rápidamente para abordar problemas procedurales que han estado longeviendo nuestra capacidad de entregar servicios de forma ondulada. Una de mis primeras acciones fue corregir errores de adquisición que habían detenido la desaparición de vehículos abandonados, un problema que había permanecido durante años. También resolvimos los botones de adquisición que habían retrasado la entrega de bienes y servicios esperantados necesarios por nuestros mayores. Hoy muchos de esos ítems críticos han sido cumplidos o están en proceso porque la adquisición ahora se maneja con una supervisión clara y disciplina. El proyecto número 146-38 busca abordar un agujero fundamental en nuestro sistema al dar formalmente al director ejecutivo autoridad de adquisición de bienes y servicios que no excedan 500,000 dólares. Esto no se trata de expandir el poder individual. Se trata de construir la estructura operativa necesaria para satisfacer las demandas evolucionantes de la dirección del pueblo. Quiero enfatizar que el Consejo de Gobernación de Guam siempre ha actuado con las mejores intenciones, fundado en servicio a nuestras comunidades. Sin embargo, el Consejo de Gobernación no tiene acceso a profesionales de adquisición certificados y la ausencia de autoridad de adquisición centralizada ha, en ocasiones, resultado en agujeros procedurales. Estos problemas han sido destacados en los auditos por el Oficio de Aceleración de la Cuidadumbre Pública. Esta medida no se trata de asignar culpa. Se trata de poner en marcha los correctos mecanismos para asegurar prácticas de adquisición legales, eficientes y transparentes a futuro. Para proporcionar un contexto importante, el proyecto 5 GCA 5141B requiere que todos los empleados del gobierno involucrados en la adquisición deben completar la formación obligatoria, la certificación y la educación continua administrada por la Comunidad de Guam en consultación con el Consejo de Asesoría de Adquisición de Guam. Esto no solo se aplica a las agencias centrales, sino también a aquellos autorizados para conducir su propia adquisición. La ley no es ambigüe. Ningún empleado del gobierno puede participar en la adquisición a menos que estén certificados correctamente. Un empleado que empieza pero no completa esta formación es considerado no complaciente. El proyecto número 146-38 respalda este estándar. No busca superar la ley existente. Al contrario, lo reforzó asegurando que la autoridad de adquisición sólo se veste en un oficial accountable y certificado que sigue actualizado con todos los requisitos legales y procedurales. Al hacerlo, esta medida fortalece la adherencia a las mejores prácticas, minimiza los retrasos innecesarios y establece líneas claras de responsabilidad sin sacrificar la responsabilidad que la gobernanza del pueblo suele exigir. Respetablemente recomiendo que el proyecto incluya una provisión explícitamente requiriendo que el director ejecutivo mantenga la certificación de adquisición activa para ejercer esta autoridad y que automáticamente retroceda al oficial de adquisición principal o su designado si ese requisito no se cumple. Para apoyar la compliance aún más, personalmente conduzco sesiones de formación trimestral para el personal del MCOG y aseguro que las fases de adquisición, de requisición a cierre, son claramente entendidas y seguidas. Nuestro equipo incluye personal certificado en todas las áreas clave del proceso de adquisición, lo que subraya nuestro compromiso con servicios éticos, legales y profesionales. Para darte una idea de la escala, en los últimos seis meses, el MCOG procesó 427 compras. Cada una representaba un servicio o suministro necesarios en nuestros pueblos. Sin embargo, a pesar de nuestra preparación operativa, nos mantenemos dependientes de un proceso externo que a menudo reduce las transacciones rutinarias. Este proyecto representa una medida pensada y soluciona responsable. Fortalece la compliance interna, aceleran el tiempo de respuesta y aseguran que nuestros pueblos reciban los recursos que necesitan sin retrasos burocráticos. Lo más importante, preservan la integridad de la ley de adquisición de Guam y reafirmamos nuestro compromiso colectivo con el servicio público efectivo y accountable. En resumen, el proyecto número 146-38 asegura que nuestros honores mayores y su equipo de apoyo están equipados con la autoridad y herramientas adecuadas para satisfacer sus responsabilidades legalmente, eficientemente y transparentemente. En conclusión, respetablemente exhorto a que apoyen esta legislación. No refleja solo un cambio de política, sino un compromiso con una mejor gobernanza, asegurando que las necesidades del pueblo sean cumplidas rápidamente, correctamente y con plena compliance con la ley. Gracias por tu tiempo, tu atención y tu apoyo continuo a nuestras comunidades. Estoy feliz de responder a cualquier pregunta que todos puedan tener.
Sí, es más, Joy Jean, por tu testimonio. Pasando por orden, signifique. Ahora sería Grambotha de GSA. Por favor, procedan.
Gracias, señor presidente. Me referiría a la activa CPO de la señora Kiriguat, pero estoy aquí para responder preguntas. Ella tiene algunos testimonios escritos para eso, y después de eso estoy libre de responder preguntas del panel.
Gracias, señor. Por favor, identifíquese para que cuando hagamos el reporte del comité.
Grambotha, Consejo de Adquisición de GSA.
Sí, es más. Así que Andy, usted es el que va.
Hola, mi nombre es Adriana Kiriguat. Soy la activa oficial de oficial de adquisición de GSA. Dios, honorable presidente Duñez, vicepresidente Ada, miembros del comité y senadores del 38° Legislativo de Guam. Estoy presentando este testimonio escrito en relación con el proyecto 146-38, un acto para agregar una nueva sección 5.117.3 a capítulo 5, título 5, del Guam Code Annotated, relativo a la aprobación del director ejecutivo del Consejo de Gobernación del Mayor de Guam, autoridad de adquisición de bienes y servicios que no excedan el valor de 500,000 dólares. El Consejo de Gobernación de Guam, permitiendo la legislación, Ley de Publicidad 1427, efectiva el 26 de mayo de 1977, establece sus poderes de adquisición en capítulo 40, título 5, del Guam Code Annotated. En esa autoridad, el Consejo de Gobernación del Mayor de Guam es autorizado a adquirir suministros o servicios menos de 15,000 dólares sin la aprobación del Administración de Servicios Gerais. El Consejo de Gobernación de Guam opera como un organismo coordinador independiente en lugar de una agencia tradicional de línea. A diferencia de las agencias de línea directamente encargadas de implementar políticas y programas del gobierno, el Consejo de Gobernación de Guam une a los mayores de la isla para colaborativamente representar las necesidades de los diversos pueblos de Guam. Esta estructura permite al Consejo de Gobernación de Guam defender efectivamente las prioridades locales mientras asegura que las voces únicas de nuestras comunidades se reflejan en la decisión de gobierno más amplia. Dado el alcance y la diversidad de los constituyentes sirvidos por el Consejo de Gobernación de Guam, establecer una autoridad de adquisición independiente es una consideración práctica para asegurar una entrega de servicios ondulada y eficiente. El 10 de mayo de 2014, la Ley de Publicidad 32131 fue aprobada, que estableció un sistema de formación, educación continua y certificación para el personal de adquisición de gobierno de Guam. Esta autoridad requiere que el personal administrando la adquisición sea correctamente formado y certificado. Más específicamente, esta provisión requiere que ninguna persona deba servir en la capacidad de un oficial de adquisición principal o administrador de adquisición de una entidad gubernamental de Guam sin un certificado de enrichimiento. La ausencia de un director ejecutivo certificado de adquisición de modelo que ejerce autoridad de adquisición presenta riesgos significativos, incluyendo no cumplir con las regulaciones de adquisición, exposición a los hallazgos auditivos y potencial uso de fondos públicos. Asegurarse de que el director ejecutivo del Consejo de Gobernación de Guam sea adecuadamente formado y certificado es esencial para el salvaje de la integridad del proceso de adquisición y proteger al gobierno de vulnerabilidades legales y financieras. El Oficio de Políticas de Adquisición, establecido por el proyecto 5.102, capítulo 5, tiene la autoridad y la responsabilidad de promover reglas de adquisición gobernante. A través de mi observación, el Consejo de Gobernación de Guam sigue todas las guías existentes y resoluciones emitidas por el Oficio de Políticas de Adquisición. Estas guías aseguran que toda la adquisición se realiza justamente, transparentemente y competitivamente, alineándose con principios de gobernanza sound. La Ley de Contabilidad Central fue aprobada por la sección 22201, capítulo 22, título 5 del Guam Code Annotated, que requiere que el director de administración establezca y administre el Oficio de Contabilidad Central del gobierno de Guam. Como el Consejo de Gobernación de Guam cae bajo el Agencia de Contabilidad Central para las pagos de factura, es apropiado que sus actividades de adquisición permanezcan sujetas a revisión independiente y auditos realizados por el Departamento de Administración de Audit Internal. Este modelo permite al Consejo de Gobernación de Guam conducir sus propias actividades de adquisición dentro del límite autorizado mientras mantienen la accountability a través de una revisión independiente. Incorporando este mecanismo de revisión en la ley, podemos ayudar a asegurar que los procesos de adquisición permanezcan transparentes, responsables y consistentes con las regulaciones financieras establecidas. Este enfoque fortalece la confianza pública y fortalece la integridad de las operaciones gubernamentales en todas las entidades, incluyendo el Consejo de Gobernación de Guam. El Agencia de Servicios Gerais apoyará una ley que da al Consejo de Gobernación de Guam la autoridad de servir a sus constituyentes y reconoce la necesidad de una revisión independiente por el Departamento de Administración de Audit Internal. Gracias por permitirnos la oportunidad de presentar nuestras opiniones. Respectablemente pedimos que la recomendación mencionada aquí esté considerada e incluida en el proyecto 146-38.
Sí, es más, Adriana. Mayor Chargalov, lo reconoces.
Realmente no tengo mucho que decir sobre esto, pero en los palabras del anterior mayor molesto, Ernest Chargalov, esto es una no-brainer. Y quiero usar mi experiencia en la agencia de agua de Guam cuando era asistente general de gestión donde teníamos que tomar o administrar nuestra orden judicial. Una de las cosas que encontramos desafiantes fue que no teníamos la flexibilidad o la oportunidad de adquirir cosas que necesitábamos para responder a las emergencias que sucedían en la agencia de agua. Cuando en realidad obtuvimos nuestra autoridad de adquisición es cuando en realidad fuimos capaces de expedir muchas de las servicios que necesitábamos para hacerse, adquirir todos los materiales y suministros que necesitábamos para abordar la orden judicial estipulada. Así que lo que imaginé aquí al darle a nuestro director de adquisición hace varias cosas. Primero, relaja al GSA de un carga potencial de trabajo que no necesitan ser cargados con más. El peso ahora está en el consejo, pero quiero decir que el director ejecutivo ha realistizado, reestructurado y empleado a la gente correcta para hacer el trabajo de manera eficiente y efectiva. Sé que van a estar cumpliendo con los mayores en términos de seguir los procedimientos de las reglas de adquisición, y tengo mucho respeto por eso porque sé que si podemos ganar esa autoridad con la adquisición, realmente no quiero perderla. Y así sé que en un caso, por ejemplo, como el incendio de la casa que ocurrió en Sinohania, si en realidad necesitábamos expedir una compra para abordar, y en este caso el mayor Hoffman para ir y ayudar a abordar esa familia, las familias desplazadas, probablemente no estaríamos capaces de expedirlo, pero con esto en marcha, podemos llamar al director ejecutivo, ella desplejará a su personal para venir y expedir la compra para que podamos abordar la necesidad de esa familia. Y luego, por supuesto, igualmente con el malestar cuando hay un inundación o algo dentro de esa situación, nuestro oficio puede ser rápidamente capaz de responder a cualquier necesidad en términos de responder a las necesidades de nuestros gente. Así que, como dije, si el mayor Ernest estaba aquí, diría lo mismo. Esto es una no-brainer, y estoy casi muy seguro de que todos ustedes estarían de acuerdo con esto. Así que gracias a ustedes todos por la oportunidad. No creo que necesite preguntar su consideración porque estoy seguro de que este es en realidad un proyecto muy bueno. Así que gracias.
Sí, es más, Mayor Chargalov. Mayor Arroyo, por favor, procedan.
Gracias, senador Duñez. Gracias, vicepresidente Ada, senador Telo Taidigui, senador Therese Tali y senador Gumutautau. Es bueno verte de nuevo. Sabes, siempre me gusta llamar a nuestro director ejecutivo. Ella no sabe esto, pero creo que su apellido medio es Module. Ella es muy adamanta y es muy firme cuando se trata de adquisición. Y eso es realmente importante. También, como el mayor aquí dijo, Marcelo Tony viene de una agencia antes, así como yo mismo de gestión de tierras. Pasar por el proceso de GSA es un problema de timing, y sabemos cómo funciona. Pero ahora como mayor, creo que estoy en total apoyo del proyecto 146-38. Y solo para ir un poco, solo algunas cosas, ya sabes. La reducción del tiempo de procesamiento, quiero decir, esto es algo que cuanto más tardamos en conseguir cosas que necesitamos para que el pueblo haga eso, más tiempo tardará el pueblo, ya sabes, el comité. Y luego la mayor responsabilidad con la operación inmediata del pueblo. Una vez que entra y estas cosas que obtenemos al consejo, tal vez en dos semanas, si es algo, el máximo. Wow, es increíble, proveniendo de esta experiencia. Pero voy a pasar por el resto aquí y solo diré esto. Como mencioné anteriormente, tenemos el programa de Day Center Adult running out of the Gangnites, el primer en la comunidad de Gangnites y a nivel pueblo, que DICID tiene planes para ejecutarlo a través del norte, centro y sur. Así que hasta ahora estamos los primeros en el centro para el piloto. Y ese programa también está pasando por la adquisición cuando necesitan limpias, necesitan cosas. Realmente me toca el corazón, con todo el corazón, que cuando me envío al Consejo de Gobernación, ponemos los documentos juntos, su personal trabaja, quiero decir, desesperadamente. Yo diré esto, durante la noche, solo diré eso. Se llega, y cuando se llega, estos individuos que necesitan ayuda física, está ahí para ellos, senadores. Así que eso, eso, hay más que puedo decir, pero te pedimos que tengan todo el apoyo y como el senador Tony dice, no dudamos de que ustedes tengan este apoyo completo porque ella ejecuta un gran programa, mi amiga, la señora Module aquí. Gracias. Oh, lo siento, Richard Arroyo, el mayor de los Gangnites.
Sí, es más, señor. Me gusta ese apellido. Así que autor del proyecto. Ok, así que voy a seguir y guardar el autor por último, así que vamos por orden de origen hoy. Así que senador Sean Gumutautau, lo reconoces.
Gracias, señor presidente, y nuevamente gracias al panel por estar con nosotros esta tarde. Solo quiero ponerlo en contexto un poco para aquellos que no han, que no han estado aquí en absoluto hoy y viendo los proceedings aquí en el edificio del Congreso de Guam. El Consejo de Gobernación de Guam, su solicitud de presupuesto FY 2026 incluye 1.168 millones o 797,000 dólares más que el nivel autorizado de 370,000 dólares en FY 2025 para servicios contractuales. Están pidiendo 223,000 dólares más que sus niveles autorizados para suministros y materiales y 236,000 dólares más, que son aproximadamente 301,000 de su nivel autorizado, para el equipamiento. Y reconociendo que esto no es una audiencia de presupuesto para el Consejo de Gobernación de Guam, ¿cuál porción del Consejo de Gobernación de Guam, esto es para Joy, del Consejo de Gobernación de Guam, FY 2024 y los alojamientos anteriores fueron llevados a FY 25 como autorizados por la ley de presupuesto FY 2025? Y de este valor, ¿cuánto representa fondos expensados que inicialmente se marcaron para servicios contractuales, suministros y materiales y equipamiento en años anteriores?
Lo siento tanto, senador, no tengo mi información de presupuesto en mí en este momento, así que no podía darte lo que representa 24 en 25, pero estaría feliz de presentar eso a tu oficina.
Y creo que es por eso que estaba preguntándote, Joy, y creo que esto es para que la gente de Guam sepa, hay muchos bienes y servicios que necesitan ser adquiridos para ayudar a los 160,000 residentes de Guam y a través de las 19 municipalidades. Eso es mucho esfuerzo, y estoy solo tratando de framing para que sepamos cuán importante es esta medida en particular para no solo el Consejo de Gobernación de Guam. Vivo en Talafofol, estoy seguro de que yo mismo y el pueblo de Talafofol definitivamente beneficiarán, así como los otros 18 municipalidades. Pido eso porque y quiero solo para que el comité entienda y también a las personas que están viendo en casa, esto es un piezo de legislación crítico que ayudará a nuestros mayores. Y quiero volver si puedo, y sé que puede que tenga su presupuesto actual contigo, pero voy a hacer esta pregunta, Joy, y quería hacer ese declaración a propósito. Y nuevamente, reconociendo que esto no es una audiencia de presupuesto para el Consejo de Gobernación de Guam con respecto a sus servicios contractuales. Así que creo que actualmente tienes 370,000 dólares en servicios contractuales en FY 25. Tienes 568,000 dólares en suministros y materiales, y tienes más de 64,000 en necesidades de equipamiento para este año actual. Nuevamente, ¿cuánto de estos alojamientos individualmente han sido expensados o encumbrados antes de esta audiencia en particular? ¿Y cómo exactamente han sido retrasados de adquisición, si hay, que han impactado la entrega de servicios públicos a cada uno de nuestros 19 municipalidades?
Bueno, podría hablar sobre... Estoy cómodo de hablar y darte números sobre 2025 ahora mismo mientras hablamos. En cuanto a 2024, si me permites algún tiempo, pero solo basado en 427 compras, eso equivale a 2.2 millones.
Sí, eso es lo que estaba tratando de decir. Creo que la gente solo piensa, oh, voy a entregar una autoridad sabiendo que, ok, tal vez como dijiste en tu propio testimonio, no estoy tratando de construir un reino aquí.
Oh, no.
Estoy tratando de apoyar a todas las personas de Guam, incluido yo, en el pueblo de Talafofol. Y es por eso que estaba preguntando, solo tratando, para las personas que quizás no entiendan exactamente lo que estamos haciendo aquí hoy, quiero que la gente de Guam entienda y para el registro para el comité, que estamos tratando de hacer un servicio muy importante a nuestras comunidades, y creo que llamémoslo colectivamente.
Correcto, así que gracias por eso, senador. Espero que fuese claro allí. Así que nuevamente, durante los últimos, quiero decir, cinco meses, pudimos procesar y asegurar 427 compras, lo que equivale a 2.2 millones. Y nuevamente, si esos, basado en nuestros mandatos, somos permitidos adquirir 15,000 y por debajo. Cualquier más, tendríamos que pasar por el Agencia de Servicios Gerais en colaboración con la Agencia de Servicios Gerais porque puedo relacionarme con el carga que tienen en el momento, ¿verdad? El oficial de adquisición principal había delegado autoridad, sin embargo, eso es solo una delegación. Así que mirando hacia adelante, y porque tengo personal profesional con certificaciones bajo ellos, creo que es hora del consejo de mantener su propia autoridad y moverse en esa dirección. Nuevamente, habla volumen, los mayores están muy contentos. Quiero decir, lo siento, no están aquí para, no estoy tratando de tocar mi hombro, pero puedo decirte esto mucho, cuando suben una solicitud, nuestro objetivo es asegurar que una compra se suba al pueblo en 10 días de negocios. Y eso, creo que nuestro oficial de adquisición principal podría decirte que es una tarea muy difícil, pero porque sabemos las necesidades, podemos responder rápidamente, mientras que el servicio general tiene a todos. Tienen 32 agencias de línea, y las necesidades pueden ser tan simples como un lápiz hasta llegar a un camión de fuego. Así que esa es la diferencia. So that's the difference. I hope I was able to answer your question.
No, you were. I mean, 2.2 million dollars, that supports every single citizen of this island, so I'm truly appreciative again. I just wanted to kind of frame it that way on purpose. I only have, just me, two more questions. What information is available describing the different types of goods and services and committee construction activities which have been procured by the Mayor's Council of Guam, in your, just in your experience since you've been there, and things you might have heard about that are above the small purchases threshold of $25,000 for goods and services, and above the $100,000 threshold for construction?
So for the, for the MCOG, our mandate's purchase is 15,000 and below, it's not 25. So that's the procurement threshold, we have a different mandate.
Oh, no, I understand that.
So I can tell you, above 15,000 would be something as simple as a copier machine? Again, I would not want to run that through GSA, considering the amount of agencies they service, then we have the 19 villages, right? So because of the delegation, I was able to do something as simple as a copier machine that is needed in every village, right, as well as our administrative office. As far as services, I could tell you plumbing service was one of them, it was an urgent need, right? Rather than running it through the GSA service, we were able to procure that immediately. So I hope that's...
No, absolutely. Thank you again, Joy, for that. And I just have one question maybe for GSA, but can you guys tell me the last time that the Guam Procurement Advisory Council met?
That might have been before my time. I've only been at GSA for a year and a half, so I'm not sure about the answer for that, but I can get the information to you.
And why I, why I ask that very important question, because in our statutes, it says that you're supposed to help, this council's supposed to help the Guam Community College to set policy, or help all those folks that are behind you, and it's not a slight to you, by the way, but everyone that is gonna get these modules, and after one year, if they don't meet, they don't exist. And it's really puzzles me as a policymaker. This is nothing, and I, forgive me, Mr. Chair, and to our, to our vice speaker, because we have a lot of conversations up here about boards and commissions. And, and, and I'll just say it, because I've had my, my time up at the office of the governor, and it's an absolute disservice to the people of Guam when these councils, and you guys are demanding us, the OPA is demanding us, hey, you guys need to do these things so that you guys, we can account for money, and then force all our people to do these modules because it's what the law says. But the one place that requires that they should meet to give the policy and direct it, hasn't met in over a year, but the rest of us are still gonna continue to do this. It's an absolute shame that they have not met. And I'm hoping the office of the governor is paying attention so that they can go ahead and submit to this body the names of the next members of this council, so they can absolutely help support the procurement needs of the entirety of the government of Guam. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sisus Massey, Senator Gomitato, I'd like to welcome Senator Will Parkinson, who's also Senator Perez this afternoon, to this public hearing. This time, I'd like to recognize Senator Telo Taregui.
Sisus Massey, and good afternoon to my colleagues. Thank you. Yes, it's a long time no see, you know. There, there is the, I'm just getting your copy from Department Administration, your testimony. And there's a section in here, actually, it says, it's like the last, second to the last paragraph, where you said, "As Mayor's Councils of Guam fall under the Central Accounting Agency for Invoice Payments, it is appropriate that its procurement activities remain subject to independent review and audits conducted by the Department Administration Internal Audit Office." Can you kind of elaborate on this comment?
So the internal audit office is fairly new at DOA, it just was revitalized in 2020. And so because sometimes internal audit offices don't have the authority that the Office of Public Accountability has when it comes to auditing, I just thought that it would, it was necessary to add that to the Guam procurement law, when it comes to the Department of Administration processing the payments.
Okay. So if this bill was passed, does it meet your concern?
Yes.
Okay, so the bill as written right now already meets your concern?
If it, if you're able to add that provision, it will meet my concern.
So to add that provision, okay, so you're asking for an amendment?
Yes.
Here, okay. And is that the, what you meant by the last paragraph when you said that, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to submit our views, we respectfully request the recommendation mentioned here with be considered and included in Bill 146?
Yes.
Okay, is there another section in, in here that you're looking for an amendment to include into the legislation? Because right now I'm only seeing this section that you first, the second to the last?
Yes, that's the only...
That's the only inclusion?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Director, Joy Tina, you know, everybody, I don't know if all my colleagues know, but I, I definitely know that you, you have a wealth of experience when it comes to procurement, working at GSA for several years, you know, being in that position. I think there's even a one time that you were in, the acting head of GSA at one point, you know, so you, you definitely know how to cross your Ts and dot your Is when it comes to procurement. And so, I mean, I wish every agency had, had your background and your skills. So my question is, is there anything in the legislation, let's say for some reason you, you decide to run for mayor yourself, right? Is there anything in the legislation that will guarantee that the next director that comes into play is going to have the same kind of background as, as you do in, in procurement?
Thank you, Senator. Actually, there is nothing currently as it's presented. But I want, I wanted to add on to what our chief procurement officer had mentioned earlier. So subject to audits, so basically that should keep the council, you know, at, at the very least, I would think, I, I don't hire executive directors, it's really the mayors that do that. I would think that's something, that is something they'll strongly consider, because to be in compliant in order for you to negotiate contracts, that is a, that is not, that is a necessity, it's a requirement. I would think that's where the council is moving forward on, because that's generally what it is now with any management position, if you were to negotiate on behalf of the government, there are certain phases, or there are certain modules you have to complete in order for you to do so. Again, nothing is presented currently in the language as we look, or in the bill as it, as it's presented. However, I did, I did say during my testimony that if it's, if, if the author of the bill would want to include language, whereas if the executive director does not hold those certification, it reverts back to the General Service Agency. Again, I'm, I'm looking forward and I'm thinking the council would, would want to comply with all the laws, because there's, there's, they're there for a reason, right? So that should be one of the areas they may wanna focus on as well.
Not that I don't doubt that you can probably take care of all the procurement that's brought forward to the Guam Mayor's Council, but I'm pretty sure you have staff, right, to assist you with that. How many do you have under your belt right now, as far as staff, that, that actually meets the requirement of this?
So with procurement, Senator, every phase has a certification, and every phase that comes in, it goes through the, the process in our office. I currently have three staff that handles procurement, and they have their modules. I can tell you, my administrative officer is modded 1 to 5, my executive secretary is modded 1 to 3, I myself is 1 to 5. So anyone that is reviewing, signing, or facilitating any procurement activity, rest assured that we are dotting our Is and crossing our Ts. Those that are processing on behalf of the mayors, whereas they're reviewing and soliciting, they're qualified to do so based on their modules that they currently have. And we have signed up the remaining staff regardless if they're processing procurement to take on this training, it's just the availability with the Guam Community College.
Okay, and the cost for each module?
It's 208.
Okay, so has the mayor's office set aside the funding for that?
Absolutely.
Because in the fiscal note, it talks about that, you know, the cost of just how many people will be involved in that. And the continuing education for procurement is every, how, every two years or every year for continuing education?
So we, what, what I've done is I've reached out to our, our chief procurement officer to see what other areas where we can enhance our procurement training. So far, that's all we have, is the Guam Community College. But what I've also factored in, in our budget is training the village level as well. So those administrative assistants, municipal clerks, if they touch or they review the budget on behalf of their mayors, I am extending that out to them as well. And, and some of them have already taken. I think there's two villages that have actually modded up to, from 1 to 3, if I'm not mistaken. But otherwise, all procurement is now centralized in my office.
Okay, that's good. Well, you can ask Mayor Hoffman if any of those certified heavy equipment operator can get procurement as well. That was very impressive, hearing earlier how he had his staff, you know, go through that type of training. So, and that was, yeah, that's a very difficult training, but for, for the procurement process, I think it's a must, an absolute must to anybody, you know, moving forward. Now, why 500,000? That's the big question. I mean, was this bill created by the mayor, it was a request by the mayor's office, and why did you come up with 500,000?
So anything above the 500,000 threshold goes through the review with the Attorney General's Office, so anything below that is really at the purview of the head of the agency.
So that's why 500,000?
Correct. It's truly to mirror.
Okay, that, well, that makes sense. Okay. Well, what are some of the projects that the Mayor's Council is foreseeing, you know, needing this funding? I know you mentioned something in your testimony, right? Earlier, some of the projects that, I think even Mayor Chagallav has mentioned some of the, the projects you have, but at that amount of 500,000, I mean, what kind of projects, if you were to go even at that level?
So, sure, so not so much at the 500,000 threshold, but if you want, I can give you one example, we currently have a bid out, which is the Recycling Revolving Fund, that is going to exceed 500,000. My office in, together with the Attorney General's Office, we are going through the phases right now. I can tell you right now, that bid is at Phase 2. I, I think, I'm not sure, I, I look back in history, I don't think the council really has put any bids out, but for the past four months, we put out three bids already, which is white goods, copier, and the abandoned vehicle, and we will continue to do so.
I see, okay. Well, I appreciate your time and, and of course, your enthusiasm to try and move things a lot faster, because procurement is one of those areas that everybody just, you know, they don't do a sigh of relief, they just hold their breath and then, that it, or cross their fingers and say the Hail Mary to try and get something through. So hopefully this will help the mayor's office, so I appreciate your answers to my questions. Thank you so much, and thank you, mayors, for being here as well.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sisus Massey, Senator Chalaki, you're recognized this time.
Sisus Massey, thank you all for your testimony. So I have a couple of questions. So this bill is to pretty much transfer the authority that GSA currently holds over to the Mayor's Council, actually to the executive director of the Mayor's Council of Guam. And, but this authority to delegate that already exists and in law, and I just wanna ask the chief procurement officer, so have you delegated that? I think I heard it in one of the testimonies, but can you be very clear?
Yes, I have delegated procurement authority to the Mayor's Council of Guam, the executive director of the Mayor's Council.
All right, and so that authority in law, 5GCA 5114, allows you to delegate, you've done that, so they're already kind of acting under this? It does, is your delegation limited to 500,000 or any other limits on it?
No, my, but it is delegated by fiscal year, so it, there is a, an expiration date.
All right. Do you think that the CPO should retain that authority to pull it back?
I think because the Mayor's Council of Guam is not necessarily a line agency, that is the main reason for my support of this.
Okay, and what about, but you still want it to be, okay, so even if you're not the CPO, you think it, it would be okay with future CPOs, with, with DOA, that they, even if the audits are not going well, that they don't have the authority to pull it back?
I think that that's why there's the audit authority in place, that I don't think that it's necessarily the chief procurement officer's job to, to give it or take it away, because they are not a line agency, and so that's the reason.
Well, it is their job now.
Yes.
Absolutely, it is your job, and for almost every department of the government.
For, yes, for certain.
This would be an exception, one of the few exceptions. And they do this on the premise that there's a delay at GSA, so I just want you to explain that. Is there really a delay at GSA, and what is, what is, why?
If I'm being honest, because of the amount of staff that the General Services Agency does have, and the amount of agencies that we have to procure for, there is a delay. I'll be completely honest, but it's really, any procurement could end up in delays depending on the complexity of procurement. And so it's not pushing blame that GSA is not getting it done, that's why we're going this route, it's just making everything as accountable as possible. And so because the Mayor's Council of Guam doesn't necess, isn't necessarily considered a line agency in its enabling legislation, just like that of agencies like the Guam Power Authority or GSWA that doesn't need delegation.
Those are autonomous agencies, yes.
Yes.
Okay. And so, yeah, we have your language, that this shall remain subject to independent review and audits conducted by DOA's Internal Audit Office, right? You want that included in the bill? Okay, and then for the, one more thing. So for the others that have been granted this exception in the law, I'm not sure who you've delegated this authority to on your own, but on the law, it says GPA Board, Guam Preservation Trust Board, GSWA Board, and the Municipal Planning Council of the Host Communities. But in this case, it's going to go to the director and not to the mayor's council. Is that okay with you, in your opinion?
If they have the modules by law.
All right, and so we should have that because she want the executive directors request that that also be included, right? That procurement authority shall, I think automatically revert to CPO if the director does not maintain active procurement certification, right? Okay, and then, so I, the other question I had was, so this language says that we're going to delegate procurement for purchases and contracts, and I just noticed that those words are different than all the other boards that you've given this authority to. It says for supplies and services, does that make a difference? If it says procurements and contracts versus supplies and services?
It should just say supplies and services, yes.
Okay, and then, that would be consistent then, and I'm glad. Otherwise, those were just my questions, I have no objection at all to the Mayor's Council of Guam handling this for themselves, and if it makes it faster. The reason I'm asking all these questions is because if it's good for them, why wouldn't it be good for everybody? And we just finished going through, I'm pretty sure last year or very recently, a kind of re-view again of this central procurement authority, and whether it was still the model that we should keep or not. So I'm, I'm just curious about that. But, but otherwise, for the Mayor's Council, I, I would agree to this exception, and I wanna thank the director for really on her own coming up with the limitations on it, and ensuring that we're going to have full review. So I hope that that will, apparently it has already, we've, it made things much faster and efficient, so that's great.
A lot faster, Senator. I mean, I, I, I'm not the mayors, and I'm, I wish they were able to, probably the two here could, you know, expound on that, but our goal is to get that... But our goal is to get that purchase order to the village as quick as we can.
Yeah, I think it was a very strategic, smart move of the mayor's council to ensure that they have staff that can do that. So that's great. I support this bill. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Parkinson, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a general question for GSA. You say you guys are suffering through labor shortages there, and that's why things are a little bit delayed. How much of a labor shortage are we talking about? Like, if we doubled your workforce, tripled your workforce, what would it take to get these procurements, just on a general level, to more a more reasonable wait time and a more reasonable capacity for your for your office?
I would ask to double. I only have five buyers that procure for all the line agencies. So I would ask to double that.
So you would you would have the capacity to at least double the capacity at GSA and still have plenty of work to do?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. I support this bill, and thank you for your time, Mr. Chair.
Just a follow up to that real quick, Arianna. Do you have that? Do you have that capability in your current staffing pattern?
No, I do not.
So you're do you mean double of your current level? Or do you mean double you have capacity to recruit? You have budgeted vacancies is what I'm asking.
I would need double of my current level. We are we do have with our HR department, two positions, a buyer supervisor two and a buyer one. But I would need at least, if realistically, 10 buyers. Right now, I serve in the capacity as acting, but I am doing a lot of the review that necessarily a chief procurement officer wouldn't be doing if we had a buyer supervisor.
I know we just went over your budget. Was that included in your budget?
Yes, that was included in our budget.
Okay, good enough.
Not the not the four buyer positions, no.
It wasn't? Okay. Okay, so that we just want to make sure what's on the record. A lot of agencies that or instrumentals that appear before us, when we talk about their manpower needs, they have budgeted vacancies. So it's a matter of whether it's a recruitment issue or statute. So I had to just clear that up. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to the panel. Yeah, a lot of the questions were asked. There's some follow up questions that I have. In regards to the executive director, what is the job description? Because I know it's great that they hired almost like a CPO type executive director. I think that's really great. But I don't recall, you know, what is the job description for an executive director?
I can only speak for myself. When I was approached regard with regards to the position and its duties, the biggest concern they had was procurement. That was one area. And of course, emergency response and operating on a day to day basis, right? I can tell you that when I came in, there was many bottlenecks on procurement. So the need was there. To execute was very difficult. Again, no blame in anyone's part. It was maybe short staff, not knowing how to move with the certain methods, what would be more quicker. Those were the concerns that were brought to me as I was approached about the position.
Okay. Yeah, I understand, and I'm so happy that they hired you. But for anyone on the panel, can you explain what is the job description for the executive director? Okay, Mayor Hoffman, thank you.
Thank you, Robert Hoffman, San Jose Mayor. So there's two ways. There's some there's specific things listed in our standing, how many of your standing rules in our mayor's council rules, what we look for in our executive director. But what we did this time around is we knew what our concerns were, and we basically asked for resumes. So we had people from the business community submit and all walks of life. And the interview process, we said, you know, this is kind of what we're looking at and what we're looking to hope to solve. And whether they have the educational background or, you know, we so we kind of eliminated some of the things that used to say you had to have worked with the mayor or known the municipal work. We said, let's do away with that because that's not what our need is right now. So we got rid of some of those things. But we've made a strong emphasis on procurement and on emergency management because those are the two things we felt as mayors, this is where we were headed in that direction. So we have a small guideline in our mayor's council standing rules, but majority of it is just from the interview process. And collectively, we've met as mayors, I think, three times prior to even picking an executive director. We did one first round around, which was more businessman business sense. And then we realized we kind of need to push toward this direction, financial management.
Okay. Thank you for that response. So this question, anybody else want to respond? I saw somebody move. Okay. So the next question I have is for CPO, Kedigwa. I know delegation was provided for other agencies in the past. What is the SOP for delegation?
So based on law, you can actually you're only supposed to delegate to those that do a financial disclosure. And so that's how I have conducted the delegation since I assumed the position.
Okay. And also, Georgine, I know in the past, when you're working at GSA, there was delegation for the port. And it was my understanding that there was some training that had to happen for the port to get delegated authority. So, yeah, what is your understanding of through your experience?
So while I was employed with the port authority, the delegation was given by then the chief procurement officer, Ms. Claudia Faji. It was through a delegation. And that was only that that delegation was given through the to the general manager and then the assistant deputy. When I became acting at the general service agency, the delegation expiration came up. And when the request was made, of course, I conflicted myself out of that because I'm currently employed with the port authority. However, for the other agencies that made the request, I actually set the I set the parameters that they must follow the law. And if they are filing financial disclosures, and that is to the head of the agency, then the delegation was given.
Okay. And I guess in your opinion, to safeguard agencies or to ensure procurement is being followed, what sort of safeguards do you think are needed for delegation to happen?
Sure. I think training is very important. Anyone that's that's negotiating contracts on behalf of the government of Guam, which is the people of Guam, I think, must be able to fulfill these certifications. That is very important ethically. Again, financial disclosures is important, at least based on my observation. And I think just covering those areas and continuing training on procurement, communications on the government's needs and affordability is really crucial for the necessity of, I think, to uphold these positions.
As far as years of experience? So I know you have a lot of years of experience. And for the next executive director to come in, how can we be assured that they have, I guess, the expertise to carry out this delegation of half a million?
I think the council today sees the importance of ensuring that whoever is selected to lead is has that that has that under their belt because financially, it only would help them operate within their villages. So if you have that knowledge, I don't think you need 100% of it, but that that weighs heavily today. And I think over time, they're realizing that that's very critical and important for just their simple day to day operations. I truly believe that the council is going to move in that direction.
Okay. So this goes to the mayors. You know, in looking at this position, are you willing to put together a job description that has certain requirements for procurement, given this delegation?
For this bill alone, this says that if the person who holds the position is not that that module or that level or certified, then they lose it automatically refers back to the GSA. So we're comfortable with that. I wouldn't want to speak for future tie other hands because just like here, just like all the other agencies, what requirements and what what expertise do they bring to the job other than, you know, that's the whole point of either cabinet members or people who run in certain areas. We are cognizant of what our needs are at the time. This is it. And if GSA gets additional staff and the fork flows are better and procurement flows are better, then this may need can be revisited and say, yeah, we kind of don't need it. And I don't want to tie a hand saying you must have this. And we've seen that where we end up having to look outside the island, looking for somebody because every, you know, she's a hot commodity, and anybody that has that kind of that many modules, university is going to go for her. GCC is going to ask for her. Feds can ask for her and pay, you know, offer her a lot more money. So we're going to end up with who we end up. So right now, again, the mayors, we met together, and we said, this is what our needs are immediately. So we wouldn't want to tie future hands with them.
Okay. So no amount of experience, years of experience, just the training?
We have a basic on our end. And then now that we're all going through ethics, training, everything, we also see what we need to do. But I wouldn't put it as a prerequisite, you know, for us, it's prerequisite after we get elected to take the training. And that could be something that we can write into her contract easily or whoever wants to fill the contract. If the mayors collectively say we want the person to be this and have this kind of background, that'll be, you know, it could be an emergency management certificate. That would be the next person.
So the people working under you, Georgine, are they also required to disclose financially?
No, Senator, just myself, since I'm the only one signing the contracts. However, through every phase, whether it be solicitation, requisition, and negotiating, they're all certified at that level, depending on the fees.
Okay. All right. Yeah. So I was just, you know, looking at the bill. I think a lot of the concerns I had were answered in regards to constructions. Construction is not part of this. It's basically services and supplies. But yeah, just the requirements of this executive director, because this is put in law, right? It is in perpetuity unless it's changed. And so I just wanted maybe perhaps a little assurance about this position, that there is procurement knowledge and expertise. So, you know, Ms. Georgine is, you know, like I said, a CPO in a way of practice, and you guys are very lucky to have her. But I just don't know about the next one, right? So we want to make sure that the mayors have somebody who's qualified and has that expertise. So that's what I was thinking, my line of questioning was about. And then the other thing about the purchase orders, so 427 purchase orders in the last six months. What is this, the, I guess, the amounts of those? Are they where they range?
Anywhere from 500 is, well, I think I just signed one that was 300 all the way up to, yeah, or 200.
$300 or 300,000?
$200.
$200. Like, I got soccer balls. I got a PO for soccer balls.
For $200?
I had to get a PO for soccer balls, but that's what it was. And here's like, here's your soccer ball. I'm like, thank you.
So planning procurement for me is real big for the mayors. And, you know, I got hit when I first came in, but now they understand the concept of planning their procurement. So, yes, we we sign I signed one as as low as just 200. And then as recent as, I know I just set aside one for recycling revolving fund that was probably, well, again, that is funded at 1.5 million. So we go anywhere from as low as 200 to as high as.
And it ranges security alarm services, plumbing, electrical needs. I mean, we've done quite a few already.
I just did one yesterday for 3,000, 3,000 for the for the memorial.
And where is the median in this median purchase? Like, where is the midline?
As far as median, I see a lot of so, let me take it back. When I, again, when I reviewed all the procurement, when I sat in, a lot of it was small purchases, right? And so to get the village to plan the procurement so we can have less of the influx of paperwork, whereas we are able to put it out on a bid, get the best bang for our buck, that transition period is still happening today. We are, I know my administrative officer has has come up with supplies that are continuously purchased. So that's supposed to assist with the process. Now, as far as the median, I like to be able to say, did you want to say?
I'm usually ours is our basis in our budget. We don't have a lot of money. I mean, my budget's $40,000. And most of what my, if anything, I'm going to do is my biggest purchase is fuel. And then after that, it's just light bulbs and maintenance and paint stuff. So there's it's based on that for us. And so we're not doing any large anything where and it's all done with the number of requests they send out to all the available vendors who are willing to do business with the governor of Guam. That's our restraint right now because a lot of them are saying, no, thank you.
So we're trying to go bigger by consolidating and getting the best bang for our buck. In order for to do that, for us to do that, we got to go through a bid process. If I was to stick with our current mandate, I would have to lean on GSA where, you know, again, a lot of that can be done here in our office. We have the resources to do it, and we have the certifications to do it.
Thank you for the response. This question is for the legal, procurement legal. Didn't want to leave you out.
Thank you, Senator.
So the the big thing about, I guess, GSA is the SOPs, right? And, you know, if, you know, something like this bill, we definitely want to be proactive, right? We don't want to wait till something bad happens. And so can GSA put together SOP regarding just to like monitor these delegations and see, okay, they're doing this, this, and this correctly, right? That sort of thing, getting ahead of the ballgame, I guess. Is that something that GSA would be able to do just to make sure that this delegated authority, not just to the mayor's council, but to other agencies where delegated authority is given, that there's a way to check it, right? To make sure that procurement is being done properly?
Yes, I think, and part of that as well as, as the CPO mentioned, is with the audit process to make sure. Obviously, the audit pulls up something, you know, the findings when they look a little bit more carefully into it and find something that's not it's not done as well as it could be, then then you would certainly look at whether the delegation should be continued. But I think we could put together something, you know, for those that are delegated, like the port, I think it's done on an annual basis along with. Now, this would be a permanent delegation to the mayor's council, obviously, should the body pass, the bill is written. So, I mean, we would certainly still want to monitor it. And obviously, I think the one tripwire is is unfortunately, if Georgine moves on somewhere else, then we would certainly want to make sure that the next executive director, as the mayors have agreed, would be properly certified. Otherwise, it would automatically revert back to GSA should that the next incumbent not have those or not timely acquire those certifications.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Because I know in another hearing, there was talk about re-centralizing because there were some questions in regards to whether it was being done properly by an agency. And so, yeah, that's this is always that push and pull about centralization, decentralization. But I think it's always important for GSA to have oversight and not wait till something bad happens, right? So that's my advocacy for any SOPs. So I appreciate everybody's response and thank you for your participation today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator, and to the author of the bill, Vice Speaker Etta. Any questions or and to close?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the panel for coming down and testifying on this piece of legislation to my colleagues for asking the very important questions. I think to the executive director of the mayor's council of Guam, your proactive approach and continuing training for those in your office with the procurement process and ensuring that the modules are continuously being adhered to and also training as you go along, I think the importance here is that you guys will have that ability to ensure that the needs of the mayors and the needs of the people in their different municipalities are met. And with this piece of legislation, it ensures that. But it also ensures responsibility and accountability and transparency for the purchases that are made. Your suggestion in that it goes back to the chief procurement officer, if the executive director is not a is not trained in or certified in all five modules, perhaps maybe that's something the mayor's council can look at in ensuring in future hires for executive directors that that be a requisite. I mean, that's it's going to only help you instead of going and reverting back that authority from the mayor's council back to the chief procurement officer. So maybe something to adjust and look forward to. And, you know, I I'm grateful. officer. So maybe something to adjust and look forward to. And, you know, I'm grateful to GSA for all that they do. And perhaps this is something that, you know, it's not the magic bullet to all the procurement issues that we have. But in my visit to DC recently, this was an issue, is procurement. Because we're not spending federal dollars fast enough that it becomes an issue that it returns back to the federal government. And all they say back there is, stop returning money to the federal government, because Department of Treasury gets happy when they get it, because it goes somewhere else. So we've got to continue to stay mindful and vigilant in ensuring that the federal dollars that we do get, and we do expend, that we expend it with transparency and accountability, but most especially, that we expend it. So, again, thank you to my colleagues for their input on this piece of legislation. Thank you to the mayor's council of Guam, to the mayors who are here. Thank you. And also to GSA, thank you for your input. And we look forward to moving the, on this bill on the markup committee, and then perhaps hopefully be able to get it into our July session. So with that said, we truly appreciate you all. Mr. Chairman, thank you for your hearing on this bill, sir.
This is Massey, Vice Speaker. And I want to, once again, thank everyone who came forward to testify on this bill, and the good information that we were able to get in terms of the question and answer. I can attest to having met with the mayors, and either independently or collectively, that, and Georgine was a pain in the butt in the beginning, but everybody got on board and really understands, you know, what's built in now to how things are going. Not, not that, you know, there wasn't accountability before, but just, you know, the system, and having the system in place and that planning. And I've been hearing your execution is a lot more effective now, in terms of getting things and accounting for things. And so, yeah, every, every bumpy start moves out at some point. So Georgine, thank you for everything you've done. Hopefully, they, hopefully nobody steals you right away. But, but yeah, certainly, certainly this is kind of a tailor-made bill. But it's also going to be tailor-made, I believe, to ensure that, that this is a strict requirement. So the mayor's council, it's going to, it's going to be probably top of their list if they have to do a search. So Georgine, and the rest of you, thank you very much. So this will conclude the testimony on bill, let's see, 146, 38. And so we will now move on, we can excuse the panel. If any of you are staying on board for the next bill, it has similar facets to it. So go ahead and just stay seated if you'd like to. So now we will move on to hear bill number 13438COR, introduced by William A. Parkinson, an act to amend 51, or excuse me, 5213 of chapter 5, title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to increasing the small purchases threshold. And so I'd like to go ahead and ask that Senator Parkinson, go ahead and introduce this bill at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise today as the author of bill 134-38, which seeks to raise the small purchase threshold to 250,000 for all government of Guam agencies. This bill is grounded in policy, guided by precedent, and driven by an urgent need to address the procurement paralysis affecting our most basic government functions. Across nearly every, every government agency, and nowhere more alarmingly than at Guam Memorial Hospital, we've seen how our procurement laws have become a procedural trap, delaying the purchase of life-saving supplies like linens, pharmaceuticals, gloves, and basic medical equipment. This paralysis has become a persistent procedural pitfall. Agencies are mired in red tape, unable to act quickly even when lives are on the line. Protest, administrative reviews, and statutory hurdles delay not luxury items, but necessities. Linens for hospitals, antibiotics for infections, gloves for our nurses. This bill is directly inspired by testimony from GMH leadership, who explained that something as simple as buying replacement linens is a multi-month ordeal. Multi-month to get basic linens. That is not just inefficient, it is almost inhumane. Bill 13438 amends our procurement laws to raise the small purchase threshold to 250,000, aligning us with the federal simplified acquisition threshold under FAR 2.101. This allows government agencies to use streamlined, simplified procedures to acquire goods and services up to that amount. Procedures that are faster, more efficient, and better suited to the daily operational need of our public institutions. Importantly, this bill does not remove oversight. All purchases are still subject to the competitive quotes and documentation requirements. What it does eliminate is the unnecessary formalities that delay routine urgent purchases. And let it be clear, this approach is not novel. The federal government raised its simplified acquisition threshold from 150,000 to 250,000 in 2018, recognizing that the cost of doing business has risen, and that bureaucracy must evolve with the times. Colorado uses a $250,000 threshold for small purchases. Oregon similarly permits informal procurements up to 250K. Virginia has raised its small purchase threshold to 200,000 for goods and services, and 300,000 for construction. Hawaii allows expedited purchases of, of construction up to 250K. The American Bar Association's Model Procurement Code endorses this flexibility. It doesn't set a fixed-dollar amount, it calls on jurisdictions to determine the threshold appropriate to their needs. And the message is very clear. Efficient procurement is not about rigid rules, it's about results. And the results of our current procurement system fall short of what we need. We are no longer living in a time of surplus and uncertainty, we are entering an era of global uncertainty. Supply chains are fragile, especially the most recent waves of trade restrictions, tariffs, geopolitical uncertainty, and outright war. These are all driving up costs and stretching delivery timelines, and already affecting the cost and availability of healthcare-related imports. Guam, as an island thousands of miles from major supply hubs, cannot afford to wait. We need to act with foresight and flexibility, and we must stockpile now. Not reactively when shelves are bare, but proactively while we still can. That means enabling our agencies to purchase gloves, masks, wipes, saline, bandages, everything that keeps a hospital running, without dragging through a six-month procurement gauntlet. And this is not just about the hospitals, this is about every school administrator waiting for furniture, every school bus that needs parts to function, every repair that our mayors need for their work trucks, and much, much more. A 250,000 threshold means an agency can quickly get three quotes, select the most competitive and qualified vendors, and move forward. That's what the federal government does, that's what the best-practice states do, that's what Guam must do. And so let me anticipate a question I know will come. Won't this open the door to abuse? And the answer is no. Raising the small purchase threshold does not eliminate procurement rules. It shifts the process from sealed bids to documented quotes. Agencies still must show due diligence, records are still reviewed, and oversight remains in place. In fact, by reducing delays and unnecessary appeals, we may reduce the incentive for bad actors to exploit the system through protest tactics or speculative bidding. We're cutting the red tape, we're not cutting corners. So I urge my colleagues and the public to understand, this bill is not about spending more, it's about spending smarter. It's about empowering the government of Guam to respond quickly, prudently, and with purpose. Our frontline workers, from nurses to maintenance crews, deserve better than to be hobbled by outdated rules. We owe it to them, and we owe it to the people of Guam to pass this reform. Bill 134-38 is an opportunity to move from delay to delivery, from paralysis to preparedness, from bureaucratic entanglement to efficient governance. And I ask my colleagues for their support. With that, I yield the rest of my time, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
This is Massey, Senator Parkinson. So for this bill, we have, once again, GSA present with us. We have Mr. Graham Botha, and also Adriana Kitegu. So Graham, you are the one who's checked off as testifying, but I'll defer to how you're going to handle it with Ms. Adriana.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Graham Botha, GSA Procurement Council. At this time, I would defer to Ms. Kitegu, she does have some written prepared testimony. And then, of course, I'm free to answer questions from the panel with any concerns, questions they may have.
This is Massey. Graham, Adriana, you're up.
Adriana Kitegu, Acting Chief Procurement Officer for the General Services Agency. Dear Honorable Chairman Duaneus, Senator Parkinson, members of the committee, and senators of the 38th Guam Legislature, I am submitting this written testimony in regard to bill 13438, an act to amend section 5213 of chapter 5, title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to increasing the small purchase threshold to $250,000. In August 2017, Public Law 3435 was enacted, raising the small purchase threshold to $25,000 for supplies and services, and $100,000 for construction. The small purchase procurement method is intended for low-cost, low-risk transactions, and are designed to streamline the procurement process. Under the Guam procurement law, small purchases are not subject to the same procedural requirements, such as public notices, formal advertising, or bid securities from vendors for supplies and services. Instead, procurement professionals may directly solicit quotes from vendors they are familiar with, or believe can meet the procurement's needs. This increases efficiency and flexibility, particularly for routine or time-sensitive procurement. However, the absence of public or formal advertising means that other qualified businesses may be unaware of these opportunities, potentially excluding them from participating in the solicitation. The Guam procurement law requires the issuance of an invitation for bid when the estimated cost exceeds $25,000 covered by section 5211 of chapter 5, title 5, Guam Code Annotated. A core objective of government procurement is to ensure that public funds are spent fairly, transparently, and efficiently. Competitive sealed bidding, as required by the Guam procurement law, promotes open participation through public notice and bid security requirements, helping to create opportunities for a broader range of vendors, including small and minority-owned businesses. A substantial increase to the small purchase threshold could reduce the number of contracts subject to these competitive processes, potentially limiting vendor participation and public visibility into procurement decisions. In December 2021, Public Law 3670 was passed, amending section 5214 of chapter 5, title 5, Guam Code Annotated. Under current procurement regulations, sole-source procurements require public advertising for transactions of $50,000 or more prior to the award of the contract. In contrast, small purchases are not subject to the same advertising requirements. Based on current market conditions, an increase in the small purchase threshold to $50,000 would be far more reasonable and responsible than the proposed jump to $250,000. A $50,000 threshold offers a practical update that reflects market realities, while still upholding key procurement principles: transparency, competition, and fiscal responsibility. This amount allows agencies to respond more efficiently to procurement needs without bypassing the critical control safeguarding public funds. Aligning the $50,000 threshold with sole-source procedures, which mandate the advertisements of contracts exceeding this amount, will enhance transparency and foster public trust, as all procurements over $50,000 will be publicly advertised. In elevating the appropriate increase to the small purchase threshold, it is essential to ground your decision using actual procurement data. Since this fiscal year began, the General Services Agency has processed more than 1,100 requisitions. Of these, 76 were processed for purchases exceeding $50,000. These figures clearly demonstrate that while purchases above $50,000 do occur, they represent a relatively small fraction, just 7% of total requisition submitted. This data supports a reasonable increase in the small purchase threshold to $50,000, which would streamline the vast majority of routine procurements without compromising oversight for larger, more complex contracts. The General Services Agency supports legislation that reflects a measured increase to the small purchase threshold, recognizing its potential to enhance procurement efficiency, an improvement that will be increasingly important moving forward, without sacrificing fairness, transparency, and oversight. This approach will still support local businesses, protect taxpayers' dollars, and maintain the integrity of our procurement system. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to submit our views. We respectfully request the recommendation mentioned here with be considered and included in bill 13438. Thank you.
This is Massey, Adriana. And so we're going to go ahead and go with the senators in the order that they have arrived and to be recognized. Senator Gumitato, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to GSA for being with us this afternoon. Mr. Chair, there was an OPA compliance audit of GPA and GWA that was issued in December of 2023, for the period of October 1, 2019 to September 30, 2022, which found that the requirement for at least three positive written quotation from businesses to be solicited and documented as part of the procurement file for small purchases were missing relative to procurements totaling $83,000. Now, recognizing that perhaps other agencies may have experienced similar gaps in their respective procurement processes, what information is available on whether GPA, or GWA, or other entities in the same situation have embraced the OPAs' recommendations, including but not limited to ensuring that administrative staff follow small purchase requirements, travel authorizations if applicable, contain the required number of written quotations before routing it for management approval, and supply management leadership validating whether the appropriate procurement method is used based on the nature of goods and services that are indicated on a purchase order?
Well, I, I think, Senator, that is certainly an audit finding. I don't know whether that's representative across the board for different agencies. But it would indicate certainly a challenge, depending upon how the, how the threshold is raised, because obviously that would subject more potential procurements. If the agencies don't follow, and I would note that certainly GP, in GWA, where I worked before, they do have their own procurement authority, so they're not subject to any, you know, regulation oversight, really, by GSA. And, you know, I don't, I don't know how extensive it was, other than that, obviously, the auditor did note that they, that certainly documentation was not present in the procurement file. I mean, whether it was done or not, the procurement file should properly document. And I think certainly, the intent of the small purchase 5213 is, is to make sure that it is, three quotes are documented, right? And that there's not just, well, I called three folks, and, you know, two of them never responded, so therefore, I only had one remaining quote. I don't think that would serve, you know, serve the needs of, of the public to at least have an opportunity to compete, right, for those, for those purchases and bids.
All right. Thanks, Graham. And with respect to quarterly small purchase reports that are submitted to the Guam Legislature, is the same information copied to the OPA as a courtesy? And to what extent does this reporting requirement help provide for timely and And to what extent does this reporting requirement help provide for timely and consistent monitoring for any potential procurement fraud?
Well, I'm not sure that it provides really a consistent monitoring. All it basically says is that you're required to tell the legislature, you know, the number of small procurements that you've done. I don't believe there's any other further details that are required for that, but certainly something the legislature could consider if they wanted to make more of a monitoring process. And I'm assuming that information would be available to the OPA. I'm not sure whether they get it now, but certainly could be available to them. I mean, we could -- it could certainly be added to the section to make it required, should you feel the need that it would be appropriate to increase the level. You know, in any form or fashion, maybe that would be an appropriate modification to the bill as written that would address those concerns.
So maybe just to add to your first question, I can speak to what General Services Agency does do to try to get at least three vendor -- three positive quotes by vendors. What we do is we look at our vendor listing, and we try to solicit from at least six potential vendors to get the best price and to also meet the obligation that we need three positive quotes. If we don't get at least three, we do create a written determination memo that we -- in the best -- in our best interest, we try to get three quotes, but, you know, unfortunately, sometimes we can't force vendors to quote us. And so that's one of the safeguards that we put in at the General Services Agency.
All right, thank you so much, and thank you for testifying today. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, Senator Gumitato. Senator Telo Taregui.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Off a day again. I was just wondering, maybe it was mentioned earlier, I had to step out for a real important call first, but do you see that the proposed $250,000 threshold applies uniformly to supply, services, and construction as well?
Well, and so that was one of the deficiencies, Senator, that in chatting with Ms. Kitigua that we discussed together. Small purchases, I mean, applies to goods and services as currently written, you know, $25,000 for goods and services, and then $100,000 for construction. It would be our thoughts that if the body were to consider amending one based on inflation, you know, other factors that you think would be appropriate to raise the limit, you may wish to consider raising the limit for the other one, construction as well, right? I mean, if you consider that, and that would be something, obviously, construction is not within the purview of GSA, that is only handled by the Director of DPW. So it might be something that the body would consider if you were to consider an increase because inflationary costs and other reasons that you may wish to consider at the same time increasing the construction threshold for small purchases for DPW as well.
I do have a question on a legal perspective. If anybody violates procurement with regards to, you know, well, if anyone basically violates some of the guidelines, what are the repercussions to that agency? Or is it just the individual? Or does GSA take it back and say, okay, you no longer can?
Well, I'm -- as to the agencies that GSA delegates to, I think if that were to become a pattern, and certainly if the public auditor notes that that's a pattern for that agency, my understanding is sometime in the past, the Port Authority did not have their own procurement authority. And I'm not sure whether there were issues involved with that, but it is delegated on an annual basis for some of the agencies by the GSA Chief Procurement Officer. So, I mean, that would be certainly something that if it were a pattern and were, you know, in their annual audits came up repeatedly, then certainly it would be appropriate to consider whether delegation should continue, because obviously either the Director of that agency or the procurement staff is not perhaps handling things as well as they could.
Yeah, I always mentioned, I think, earlier that, you know, when you were talking -- we were talking about that earlier, Senator Chalai, he was bringing that up. And it's done on an annual basis, but let's say in the middle of the year, you know, something like this is continuing on, because what you're saying is that, okay, well, every year, we're not going to renew you, in other words, we're not going to allow you to go. But what happens in the middle of a year, you know, six months in, and they violate the procurement laws? Can you stop them right then and there?
Yes, the letter is actually subject to the chief procurement officer's removal of the delegation at any point in the year.
Okay. Okay, so any point in the year. Okay. Other than that, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for being here, everyone.
Sisus Massey, Senator Taregui. Senator Chalai, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you again. I recognize the goals of this bill, to increase the cap on small purchases, so that the theory is that this would make it go through the agency as opposed to having to go through GSA for these small purchases, correct?
Senator, I don't believe that's --
No, that's not.
-- as written, I believe it's just, you know--
Different process for the small purchases at GSA.
Well, it -- no, as written, it's small purchases for any agency, whether it's an agency that's delegated, whether it's GSA, whether it's the hospital. The hospital certainly has and does their own procurement.
They will --
So maybe it's a special impact for them, but it would allow anyone to proceed with a small purchase, you know, if the threshold is increased.
Okay. All right. Okay, and then increasing, first of all, I appreciate your testimony where you laid out for us exactly how much impact increasing to 250 would have. Your suggestion or recommendation is to, if we want to increase it, increase it to $50,000. That's the limit of the sole-source procurement right now. And you did calculations that out of the 1,100 requisitions that you've done so far this year, only 76 of those exceeded $50,000. Only 76, that's 7%. So it's really not the procurement's -- well, anyway, so that very much clarifies the impact that we're trying to get at. So it would be the same process for all except for the 76 -- or sorry, yeah, 76 procurements, for example, for this year. And I also acknowledge your concern about whether this applies to -- I think that was also in the fiscal note from DOA or BBMR about is this supposed to apply to both supplies and services and construction, right? Or just, yeah. So that should be clarified, I guess. And then, are you also suggesting that if the bill does allow a cap over 50 for small purchases, that we should require public advertisement as we do for sole-source procurements that exceed $50,000? I'm getting that from--
Well, it would otherwise be a little complicated, Senator, unless and maybe some of the other sections are clarified, because otherwise you're kind of, you know, there's already a process. Well, the small purchases don't require that, right?
Right.
And so I think what we were thinking as far as if it exceeded $50,000, then it should follow the rest of the procedures, like even sole source requires advertisement.
Yes.
So in other words, that rather than an agency or GSA or whomever might do it, or the mayor's council now, they -- at least advertisement, there is some indication, some hope that other vendors could see it, right, and then respond. Whereas if you just look for three quotes, well, then who gets it? Only the three folks that are on a list or whatever. And not everybody may have made the list, because maybe the small vendors, disadvantaged women own, veterans own, disabled, you know, they may start with one goods and services and then move branch onto another one. Well, GSA wouldn't have them on a list for other things, right? But if there's an advertisement, well, then a far better chance, at least, that those folks could also, you know, respond to their quest, right, at need for goods and services. And one other thing, Senator, that I might note, the $250,000 seems to be based on something, the federal simplified acquisition threshold. And so the federal system, they have an entire -- they have books and, I mean, truduses. They have -- something has been in existence for many years in dealing with that. If that is a process that this body would like to consider, then perhaps the body should consider that, you know, Guam would just adopt the federal system, right? You know, and then that way it would be updated consistently and all the rest of that. But I think that's where the threshold comes from. And so we don't operate under the federal system. And so not that a larger limit might be easier for the hospital in this case, but, you know, it's not as relevant to what Guam may consider reasonable limits. Now, maybe we want to look at those other states that have been referenced to see whether we could tweak the Guam procurement code, you know, to add some more, you know, things to it to justify increasing those limits up to 250,000, if that's appropriate in the future.
All right, thank you. To the CPO, do you have the number of small purchases this year that were over 25, your current limit, and yet below 50?
I don't have the details, but I can email that to you. But I do have what has been submitted under the small purchase, which has been about 510 requisitions, our small purchase.
Okay.
But I can give you the details.
But that would be all those below 25,000?
Yes, that's all below 25,000.
500?
Yes.
Okay, and then there's 1,100?
So the 70--
Altogether, okay.
Yeah, so the 76 is invitation for bids that we have already put out.
Yeah.
That exceed, of course, the 25,000, but are lower than the 50,000.
Oh.
Yes.
Or those are higher than 50. It says exceeding 50.
Sorry, exceeding 50,000.
Yeah, so I want to know the in-between.
But also sole source, but it also includes sole-source procurement.
Oh, okay.
That exceeded 50,000, and we had to advertise for that.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I see why -- I see your rationale here, that if you're going to advertise sole sources that are over 50, it should be equitable that way. And again, we're -- the whole system is supposed to be for competition, to promote that, get value, and so the advertisement helps. If we were going to move it, yeah, I'd just like to see those numbers in between 25 and 50 right now, because I am more inclined to put it at a lesser amount. Putting it at a lesser amount would just require the more open process for everyone who's doing the procurement to follow. And the impact would be minimal, I think, compared to the amount that you are doing. But what I really want to address is, for example, the example used is GMH. GMH has multimillion-dollar worth of outstanding unpaid vendors. For me, that is the issue that they're facing and why vendors, they're having problems with procurement. And I cannot imagine that this is the reason why they do not have hospital supplies, that they can't procure things over $25,000 on a quick basis, when they should know that they need hospital supplies because they are a hospital. And like they talked about in the earlier hearing about planning for procurement, I just think, you know, planning for procurement has to happen. And if you're a hospital, you have to plan for those emergency supplies. And I just don't want that to be the excuse why we're going to bypass our system, because one agency could not plan for hospital supplies versus having multimillion-dollar worth of vendors over 120 days for sure, unpaid, unwilling to do business with the hospital. Those are the issues we're facing, I feel like, that are really -- we're jeopardizing our ability to procure as opposed to their ability to process between 50 or, you know, those below $50,000. But again, I thank you both for your testimony. I think it's very helpful. And, Mr. Chair, I would probably support this bill if it was limited to 50, but I'm going to continue to listen. Sisus Massey, thank you.
Sisus Massey. Well, we'll find out that disposition going forward, but thank you for your questions and your commentary. At this time, Senator Perez, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate the testimony provided by the CPO in regards to a more reasonable amount. I think 250, I feel, was based on the federal threshold, which agencies have that ability if they have federal funds to expend. Should, I believe, my understanding with the federal law is that if there's any conflict between federal and local law, the federal law usually supersedes the local law. So they still have that option to use 250K for small purchases for the simplified acquisition. So, yeah, in regards to, I understand that perhaps this bill was basically instigated by GMH, right? GMH asked for an increase in small purchase threshold. I guess one of the concerns, too, is that when we do increase it, of course, we want to be -- meet the inflationary standards of the time, but would that also cause an increase in government expenditures, right? Would that increase the cost? So it might have a duplicative inflationary effect, I'm thinking, because now businesses know that we're going to loosen the, I guess, the strings when it comes to purchasing. And so that could have a negative impact on government, too, as well, in regards to how much things are going to cost. So I definitely would like to exercise more caution when it comes to raising thresholds, which is why I didn't introduce a bill, because I believe it was introduced in the 34th Guam Legislature. So it was inflation at the time, you know, might have been meniscal at that point. So I'm also interested to see what DPW has to say. I know their costs have gone up quite a bit, and, you know, it'd be interesting to see what their input is on this bill. But I think it's important to have more of caution when it comes to raising these thresholds, because 250K still is available for federal funding at expenditures. But locally, yeah, I think we just need to be a little bit more aware. And I look forward to seeing also the data regarding the 25 to 50K range. And I think that's all I have as a comment, and thank you very much.
Sisus Massey, Senator Perez. Senator Parkinson, you may address any questions to the panel, as well as close on your bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't really have any questions for the panel, just, you know, more comments for my colleagues in the sense that I am negotiable on the figure of 250K, really. You know, this is just the opening salvo, the opening offer on this, guided by the federal guidelines, just basically matching their standard operating practices. If we, as a body, decide that there is a different threshold, if we just want to raise it to 50K, I'm good with that, too. You know, that's a conversation we potentially could have on the floor as a whole body or in the markup meetings, but ultimately, we need to recognize that the cost of doing business has gone up significantly. When was this figure set? Many, many years ago. And every year, more and more things are going to fall out of that threshold. Every year, something is going to cost more, and every year, something that we could make with something that was a small purchase, maybe next year we can't. So rather than wait for those problems to start accumulating to a critical point, let's be proactive, let's move the threshold. The federal government themselves saw fit to move this number themselves in 2018. And so I think it would be prudent for us as a body to do so as well. I'm good going as far as what the federal government is going. If it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. Let's not try to reinvent the wheel. Let's not try to reinvent the wheel. This has been vetted by the federal government. Let's look at that as a starting baseline. But if we as a body want to come to a consensus on a lower figure, I'm good with that, as long as the idea is it's better than what we've got now. And so with that, I ask my colleagues to think hard on, if 250K is too much for you, let's figure out what number is okay with us. Let the chair know, no number for me is sacred here, so whatever it takes to get this reform passed, let's get it passed. And with that, Mr. Chair, I ask my colleagues for the support, and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Sides must see, Senator. I just wanted to take this opportunity once again to thank both, Graham Botha and Ariana. Very, very thorough testimony, and you really assisted the committee to be able to make considerations. I think you're clear in your testimony where you want the money, where the target is for you, and in particular, since you have to manage this with various procurements going forward. I know the committee will take that under serious consideration. So thank you once again for your testimony, and it's really going to help the committee. We will do a markup on both of these bills and see the timeliness that we may be able to make it for session. And so the discussion will happen in the committee, and we'll move forward, so I thank both authors. So this time, this will conclude the public hearing on Bill Numbers 146 and 13438 COR. The committee will continue to accept written testimony on the bills within seven calendar days from today, which may be addressed to myself, Senator Christopher M. Duñez, as Chairman of the Committee, and mailed to 163 West Chalantantapapa in Agatna, 96910. You may also send your testimonies to senator.duñez@guamlegislature.gov. This afternoon's public hearing is now adjourned, and the time is 3:54. Sides must see, we are adjourned.